We got.
Yep. So I, but I have, I think that's what I told you. For, for, for. I think. So. One, two, three. So. Well, it says clocks. Silence, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to every vote which stands on the nation. God, visible, justice for all.
Call please.
Robert Jones.
I'm here.
Jessica Smith.
Here.
Jay Davis.
Here.
Steve Danny. Jeff Baye.
Here.
All friends, we count.
Thank you. The public hearing on August twenty dash three.
And sure, Mr. Bev, I believe that was already, you already had your public figure at the last meeting. You're at second reading now, so there'd be, oh, no, it is a, it is new business today. Sorry, I got my dates mixed up. So when we get to twenty thirteen, if you'd like, sir, we could open the public hearing then. Prior to the fat ordinance, because there's a public hearing, it should just be testimony. We want to appear in evidence on, on that.
Don't need it.
Not yet. I, I recommend we wait till we get to consideration of that ordinance.
All of us have a chance to read the meetings, minutes, July, any questions or concerns or changes. Not a motion to approve the penance.
Second.
Motion to a second or approval for July, he didn't mean it, so everybody, they were saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Court treasure report.
Yeah, as you probably see there, the balance of the month, July is not in place this time. Had a couple of little setbacks with some bouncing charge cards and everything's been switched in, switched in bank. Just about a day or two away from that. I would like to go with COVID relief funds. We don't know, we got allocated one hundred thirty nine thousand. Have requested and received payment reimbursed with five, seven, four so far. Get sixteen thousand plus sixty thousand that here on the land for it and we will get those and send that in. Please us with a balance of about twenty two nine, twenty thousand. And I think we needed to sit tight for that. Use that for personal protection. Got to make that last till December thirty.
Four more months, twenty two thousand. That's good. A lot of things, especially. We've looked at that hard numbers and. Well, we did. Good shot. Thanks, bro. Anything else on the court treasure report? Questions or concerns? If not, a motion to. Court treasure.
Make your motion in a room. Second.
To have a motion to second for court treasure, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. Court reports, chief board. Do you think that?
That, that's not. Unless anyone asked for.
Any questions or comments? A motion to approve the minutes as turned in to us.
My, my.
A second. A motion to second to approve the chief board's report, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you. Chief Thor, you're online.
I am. Um, I believe you have a copy of the report. Five hundred and five dispatch calls for July, twenty nine criminal adult arrests. And I have two officers out on light duty due to injuries that sustained on duty. And we also have been able to upload our monthly report to our Facebook page. That was requested by a lot of people, so we can, the sheet that you have that has the total numbers is now visible to people through our Facebook page. And that should be about it.
Two officers. Do you have a return date from light duty?
Uh, we're hoping one, September first, and the other one, we still don't know. It's, uh, yeah, we just don't know, it's day by day. They're both in physical therapy for their injuries. And to come back to full duty status because of the job, it makes it a little difficult. Any type of injury that we get can affect how we are able to do our jobs. So, uh, right now, it's just kind of touch and go, waiting for the doctors to give them the okay.
Any questions or comments to the chief? If not, ask for a motion to approve it before it is turned in.
Second.
I got a motion to second for chief forest report, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any type of. Judge Gus, you're online. Thank you, Stu. He said, maybe no, Joe. That's fine. Arthur, um, James.
I am here. And the report has much everything, I just wanted to add one thing that Rachel and I are going over the final edits for the master plan. So that will be presented at the next park board meeting. And then you all will be receiving that after the park board season. That probably first of September, I guess.
It's gonna be, their next park meeting will be held in this room. So if anyone wants to attend the next park board meeting, uh, the Sultan will come and do a presentation of the final draft of the plan. Although Aaron and I were planning on, um, a brief presentation of it at the September.
Any questions or comments, Aaron?
Yep, or on the, of the email. This fall. Scott, I will get. I'll finish it here. Uh, project or October one, I wonder if.
October twenty fourth, yes, we're in go. Three hundred tree planting, two hundred in town and a hundred in the park. I think community foundation has a page set up, they're accepting volunteers that want to help in the park or at private residences. It's gonna be a good day. Uh, all the trees are, we got DNR.
Coming from Woody Fairhouse, the funding from a company called International Paper. And this was a grant that we received Harvard Day Foundation. So, you know, we submitted it, it's recovery tree funds. So we submitted an application, you know, saying we had this tornado hit, we helped. Um, International Paper then stepped up and Harvard Day Foundation kind of connected the two of us. They gave us originally one thousand, no, it was fourteen thousand eight hundred dollars. They loved the video that we've run or put together from South Mass, Community Foundation. And gave us an extra thousand dollars to have someone come in, uh, document the day, so another video go out and end with it. So it should be a. We're doing small planting teams. Now, our, our event kind of got turned around for the book. Happened past May, we delayed it, it's in the next week now. Um, there'll be small planting teams of like five people that will go out to the residence to plant the tree that were COVID safe. Um, DNR is helping us by making all the phone calls to eight one one, sure. Or, you know, all the utilities from out guitar. Uh, each person requests a tree. There will be a, either an arborist or a tree volunteer that comes back to the site to make sure that the person who wants to see is. And if not, then they'll select a better site. From a, from a. I don't know, it's a really cool project where the guys put together and make it happen and it's just through the. Really cool thing.
A lot of areas to help them.
Yes, we'll be putting out another email soon that's asking volunteers, we wanted to kind of wait till I got a little closer to events that's on the top of your. Signing up a couple of months. I just expect something like that. Yeah.
Wait. What about, I didn't. Since that email was sent out. Now, spread the. That. People that's donating money for trees. From their house, since it's.
It's a separate deal, so, yeah, we'll take care of those residents, residents that donate money. We'll do a fall order of trees likely from Bluegrass Farm, we'll, we'll impose in the fall, but we like to wait till like. So, they'll, they'll be taken care of, um, I'm probably still gonna.
Okay. Not wrong, appreciate it. Any other questions or comments on the park?
Uh, speaking, Jeff.
No.
Can I make one little comment here? Very similar with park. Uh, we had a lot of people helping the tornado, you know. A lot of people didn't realize he would help to come and see, they'll be, I'm gonna see him get time wise, but I just like to own record. I do have them at the old ground construction, I saw him like he helped dollars off. But it, uh, for campus, maybe come down and help people. Uh, Swack Air, we're trying to, I am I, donated concrete for the. We play for the sidewalk free charge. And a lot of people, I had put a couple of guys in the barn, so we had volunteers from Castle Street Park coming. We even had the mayor of Newcastle on a board on the center there. So, you know, I get, uh, all of us try to remember these, this is. Something we can.
Can I have a motion for part? Uh, report, please.
Don't move.
Second. Motion to second for the. Part, part four, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. No management, Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Need the help of the microphone. Do the hour. Um, a couple of things I wanted to bring up, uh, first we got a stop order at the falls, which is involvement. Um, they failed to keep the deadline to help. It's fine, and the times that they're. Bringing into, and they also failed to. On the private pond. Jeff Graham and I, too, they need to coordinate with them. We're okay with them. As long as they make the upgrade to discharge the water from the falls. Um, the next thing I want to talk about is power interruptions, you know, experienced a lot of those lately. Um, we're moving thanks to the advice, pray, at the collective department, we're gonna set being active, trying to be proactive. So we've, um, initially contracted, managed. For only sixty five hundred dollars, they're gonna contribute on our. Along our lines, give us recommendations as far as streets need. Uh, trimmed. So. Smooth. And then they'll get back with us. Um, say can A to Z, they can one extreme, they can just contract trimming or expecting to tell us what needs to be trimmed. What year? So we don't have to, we don't trim everything, trim every three year cycle or something. Um, we're in the process of hiring a new building inspector, that position's been vacant for a while. Um, so we should see a new face hopefully by the time. Uh, stormwater fee. For, I've got the contract that we're requiring for to, to do an update on the stormwater fee. First, we, in terms of study, get it, perhaps with the cost of projects, maintenance, operations, asset, the big tally, they do that in the study. Boy, health insurance, uh, this is, uh, I'll give this to chat P. He said, Scott, we need to have the committee revitalized, sure it's, uh, boy, you need insurance. And so we set him down with a. Insurance provider and they did a really good job for incident, I gave them money, they doubled their vision of benefits. Added a teledoc, we should, uh, save the town some money. And then, um, they okayed a five percent. And they're okay with staying with. This is a lot of. So. Just ability to switch. Very successful. Go to the next slide. Um, advisory committee is finalized, this is. Got a candidate.
We have our candidate, um, maybe once Scott gets done with this, if you guys approve this on some managers report, we can have a, some, some names for an advisory committee that would like. Nice. We'll do that one. For your report.
The other thing that Jeff Graham and I are starting to look at is the system development fee for, for. That's different than impacting, a system development fee is, best way I can explain it is. Had the town not already had a mature system, so they did. Let's say we didn't say it's. Didn't have. Wires running apple. Well, system development fee allows us to help with cost over the years, to build the system, now making. I have to, next thing is the jobs. Uh, electrical guys did a very good job, especially during the power outage, which caused my booth to. Find it better down, that line went down. We had a few other limbs go down and damage some lines, fix those. Uh, before Duke was up with their line, so the distribution, uh, system with the template. Up and building for. School, so. That's off the bound. Uh, water guys did a really good job with beating up the old water plant that I've done before. School started, um, street department. At, there's a million things that are pressed on them, but they did a real good job of logging the line between the two ponds. At the second pond, started. Um, on Enterprise Drive, noticed, uh, they started to set up the I sixty nine signs and some other signs. And we talked to the doc this week and I said, next week. Should start this. Um, now, don't show the next slide yet, but you're. But such, there was such good work done when we had the Duke outage. There was one lineman that stood out and town doesn't know it, but probably saved them over two or three hours of being out of electricity, having not used his expertise. If we can reveal the lineman of the month. Da, da, da. Hey.
Almost looks like a book shot.
Okay, get that on. So go back.
Okay.
But honestly, this is what happened, so Billy and I met up with Ray. And somebody, this is my. The load. Now, some of these, yours and theirs, it's a lot, you know. And.
Yeah.
He said, go drive the Duke bomb, find what's wrong with it, find this down. If we get. Find it. The, the faster Duke to. Man, it was five minutes. Broadway and.
They get a buddy right now. Oh, that.
So, so the lineman. By the way, you're allowed to use some of your talents and.
Okay.
Sure. Um, for the next one, pass.
It did.
That was not, that photo was not taken.
Good one.
These are a list of projects, uh, we're going to. Adding anticipation, a lot of a stormwater fee, uh, playing what you know, a water street, park lot, break, street road disruption. We are gonna go ahead, probably next week, send out a letter telling them. We're gonna do some temporary sidewalk repairs, but this is anticipation of a lot, a lot more is happening. And then on paving, storm line, trees, and replaces all the sidewalks. But we felt for safety reasons, there's about a hundred feet of sidewalk and seven or eight boxes.
But we felt for safety reasons, there's about 100 feet sidewalk in seven or eight boxes. The flooding, let's see, we don't have any in the street, which I talk a lot about. Last meeting, flooding the fire station in Broadway. Adams Street and State Street, which also I think is going to be. The other thing that we seriously talk about is we're going to have a stormwater fee to start collecting. A lot of that dumps into county. You feel strongly, I'm getting feel strongly to tribute in a more, to tribute at least tribute to. Not taking over. This from management. Having it done. Bar grain.
Black county grain. It's county grain. Within.
The other thing is, people have built a salt barn. We're going to start getting that $2,400 a month storage fee in December, salt. So I've got some ideas on that. Fire. That's salt barn. So that's a. And then Fredericks is finishing up the cover of two, four twenty-five. Got about a mile down.
Questions? Questions or comments?
I have the building inspector, is that going to post it here in the next week?
We posted it. We, how many presidents?
Nine.
Nine. Oddly enough. Apparently, three of us picked the same.
Motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
Second. An old business, ordinance twenty-nine, eleven. Any changes or comments to?
This is the same ordinance that you considered at your previous meeting to pass through first reading. Tonight, we're going to require a simple majority vote to pass it to become effective on thirty days after publication. First part of this week. It has to be published in the newspaper before it would be effective. Because it does contain penalties. Any, any, an ordinance that you pass that contains a penalty requires publication for respect. So if this passes tonight, thirty days from now, it will be effective. Approximately.
Any questions or comments about ordinance twenty-nine, eleven? If not, can I have a motion to approve it on the second?
Make a motion to approve the second reading.
Second. Motion and second for ordinance twenty-nine, eleven, all favorites, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Chad, to get into the, to, the COVID rules now with computers and all that do require, you announce five oh, so I think we're fine with that. Roll call votes are, the governor's executive first says that we have to have a roll call vote on each vote. I don't, on acceptance reports, I don't think that's a, this is going forward. No, you're fine. You announce five oh, so that there's no question.
Actually, with this ordinance twenty-nine, twelve, or regarding golf carts, second reading. Any questions or comments? Chief Far.
Yeah.
On our. Inspection report, is there anything that we've changed? May change with ordinance twenty-nine, eleven, twenty-nine, twelve, that will change your registration. Guidelines, top six to seven page.
I am going to say no at this time unless you've changed some kind of equipment that's necessary.
We changed the equipment at all, is that correct? Yes, sir. Okay. I just want to make sure it's up. The virus, okay. Any questions on ordinance twenty-nine, twelve on golf carts? Second reading. If not, can I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion. Second reading. Second.
Motion and second. Willie?
Yes.
Could you do a roll call vote, please?
Shane Davis.
Yes.
Robert Jones.
Yes.
Jessica Smith. Dean Denny.
Yes.
Jeff Baer.
Yes.
Five oh.
Thank you, Will. So we'll publish them in thirty days after that.
Yes, sir.
Hey, new business. Ordinance twenty-nine, thirteen, ordinance made the labor charges to town.
Sir, yeah, in this one, it would be, it would be appropriate to entertain a motion to continue the public meeting and open the public hearing on this one, because it does involve a fee. Continue.
Continue this and open up a public meeting on ordinance twenty-nine, thirteen, which is. The standard rate and the overtime rate that the town will charge for different employees getting jobs in the town. I will say this, this hasn't been updated for almost twenty-two years. And Craig brought to my attention, Willie, Willie and Scott come on board. It's taken us months to come up with all this, but a lot of thought, process-wise went into it by Willie and all of us. Rachel included. But what this, this does is the electric, water, street, cemetery. Bucket truck, everything that we do in the town. We need to repaint what we're doing at two thousand twenty rates, not the nineteen ninety-eight rates. That's where it amounts to. That's just one of the things that Mr. Bowles and Craig and myself got into. So not that anything's wrong, but we just need this updated because we've got some big projects that the guys are doing and we're using nineteen ninety-eight grades. So that's what it amounts to. Is there any comments for the public? I'll give one at a time. Ash.
No, I think you've given sufficient amount. Doesn't look like you have many people.
It's online.
So at that point, if you'd like, Chad, you could close the public hearing and resume the public meeting.
I'll close the public hearing on ordinance dash twenty-nine, thirteen and resume our regular meeting. Okay. I think everybody's had a chance to look at this. Very simple, really. It just tells you what the rate is and what their return. Wrote down my classification of reported. Any questions from the council? Comments?
One thing people need to understand that are watching is this is what we charge customers that they come to us and ask us to do work. Like Craig, if they come and their line, line buried underground, then that's what we charge them. This is not the work we would normally do. This is extra work that they, customers have asked us to do.
Well, yeah. Or like somebody car up.
Right.
On the low nine, we.
That's a good example.
Yeah. Great, great about that, getting this information and getting with the police department, sports and filling the people. Yeah, buddy.
We had a bunch of that, you understand, like at that point, collecting stuff. All expecting the application of that.
Well, you know. Straight up. Assist us. On the road. We're all being paid. Due to something not normal.
I smell.
Small.
You're going to bill me or what?
Bob, like catty corner cross from post officer, fire height that was hit and it's an ankle. Got a few when getting ready to tear that. Owner that did it's paying.
So the guys, I said, the guys at Linda group, Willis group, track all that, track that, but charge that out. All we're doing, I'll change it, I would do it, the dollar fee. It's working well. Another good example I will bring up is the wellness center. Lots and lots of labor hours in wellness center. That these nineteen ninety-eight wages versus twenty, twenty wages, a lot of money for the town. So that's what we want.
And twenty-two years ago, that week, we got one on there that take dollars an hour. Come a long way since then.
Any other questions or comments? It's not a, entertain a motion for ordinance twenty-nine, thirteen.
Make a motion to approve ordinance twenty-nine, thirteen.
The first reading?
First reading, yeah.
I'll second that.
I have a motion of second for twenty-nine, thirteen, all favorites, say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry. Thank you.
Uh, yes. Jessica Smith. Robert Jones. Shane Davis.
Yes.
Jeff Baer.
Yes.
That, there could be, you could entertain a motion to suspend the rules for unanimous consent to pass the, consider passing this ordinance on the first night.
Well, I asked for that motion. Entertain it.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion second to suspend the rules and go ahead and have a second reading on this two for ordinance, all. I'm sorry. Roll call.
Robert Jones.
Yes.
Jessica Smith. Dean Denny.
Yes.
Shane Davis.
Yes.
Jeff Baer.
Yes.
We suspend the rules, now I need a motion to approve the second readings for twenty-nine, thirteen.
I'll make a motion to approve. Twenty-nine, thirteen.
Second readings, I didn't read.
Second.
I have a motion of second for the second reading of twenty-nine, thirteen. Roll call vote.
Bob Jones.
Yeah.
Jessica Smith. Dean Denny.
Yes.
Shane Davis.
Yes.
Jeff Baer.
Yes.
All guys got a lot of notes on it. Motion to carry five nothing. That can start immediately, right?
That?
Yes.
Bill's going out in the morning.
Bill, are you sending all them bills out now? Okay. Ordinance twenty-nine, fourteen. Let me, ordinance admitting the traffic schedule.
This is simply a changing of the intersection of Broadway and Indiana. It's currently a two-way stop, but this would make it a three-way stop if it passed.
The whole idea is to slow people down. Broadway. And as we discussed last month at the meeting, we're still going to have speakers, but Chief Far, you speak up at any time. But you want us to make it clear, we're still going to have speakers. This will slow them down and it's probably, I think that's the right thing to do at this time. Any other questions, Chief, if you got any comments?
Yeah, a lot of people were complaining on the brick area of Broadway. This is not anything to do with that. This has to do with the long stretch between Madison and sixty-seven. There was talk about putting stop signs at Moore and Clark and Indiana and to break up that long stretch. And right now, this was an idea thrown around to put it in Indiana. So again, there are speakers on every street in the world and it's not going to be foolproof, but it definitely closes that long stretch along South Broadway.
Any questions on ordinance twenty-nine, fourteen?
I think probably a good move, I don't know if you want to call the screening or anything else. Chief saying, probably stop, creating the noise, hopefully get people's attention to slow down, stop. I didn't move, I didn't, probably city to be, kind of paying that attention as well, so it's the form.
Scott?
Sure.
You live in that neighborhood, you think it's necessary?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Take you a couple moments, get over lunch.
All right.
All right.
So, and I want all my comments to, last reading I think was on Pedal Avenue. They actually, I think in, part one of the older police cars driveway out there. And I got nothing but positive comments with people that it slowed people down. Like two sets, several apps for yours, it's not a cure all, but. They can't be replaced all the time, but I think this is what Willie just asked Scott. It's, it's an issue that, that's a cut through, especially in the highway, to miss the stoplight of highway. So I, I think it's a plus, I think it's worth it. Any other questions or comments from the council? If not, can I entertain a motion for ordinance twenty-nine, fourteen?
I'm making a motion for twenty-fourteen, for free.
Second.
I have a motion for ordinance twenty-nine, fourteen, admitting traffic schedule, first reading, all. I'm sorry. Roll call.
Jessica Smith. Steve Denny. Robert Jones. Shane Davis.
Yes.
Jeff Baer.
Yes.
The ordinance twenty-nine, fifteen is orders upon a zoning change. Rachel?
Yep.
You want to talk about this?
Yes, I will. If you guys look in your presentation, or in your Google Drive, there's a presentation in there called Impact Fees and Rezone. If you want to open that up, follow along there, or you can look at the screen. Okay, make sure I'm sharing this with the public, so they can just. Okay, um, so tonight we have a rezone for consideration. This went to the plan commission last week on Wednesday. They did vote for the, vote favor of the rezone, so I'll just kind of walk you through what we talked about last week, and then if you guys have any questions, please feel free to interrupt. Um, this site is uh, a little over five acre site. It's near the sports complex. You can see it's outlined in red on the image. This is, hold on one second. Oh. Doing some electric company stuff over here. Okay, sorry, back to, back to our rezone. Uh, this is about a little over a five acre site, and we did have Cal Wilson, who is in the attend, in attendance tonight, who is looking at doing an indoor baseball slash softball facility uh, near the sports complex. As you guys know, to the south of his site, or kind of in the middle of the site, is the Hubble Athletic Facility, the Hubble Athletic Club that's already out there. Um, so what you're doing is, you know, he has a, a set, a kind of a general site plan right now of what the layout would look like. There's a, a building and a parking lot. The parking lot would uh, join up with Hubble existing parking lot. And then the petitioner is also looking at connecting to a future road connection to the north of this parcel. When we went to the plan commission, um, we talked about how this site is already zoned agricultural. The petitioner is looking, we encouraged the petitioner to zone it recreational and open space. We think that goes along with the fit of the field out there. As staff, we were a little hesitant, just as we were with Hubble on rezoning it to straight plan business, because we thought that opened us up to maybe some uses we didn't feel we want out by this sports complex. Um, I think that as planning staff, we wanna make sure that any uses that go out in that particular area should be complementary towards, you know, the park and the sports complex. So we have a little bit more control over it as a town if we say that it's zoned recreational and open space. Uh, we did look at um, you know, what our comprehensive plan says, and you can see kind of the, the pink area that's highlighted up there. Our plan commission and our town and you guys all were in favor of this being some type of either um, business use or residential use. So we think that this is a good fit. It does flow with what the comprehensive plan says, that will be a recreational use of business type use. The, within that recreational open space use matrix that we have, permitted activities include athletic facilities, batting and driving ranges, mini golf, community centers, also parks and places. So if at some point Cal decides that he no longer wants to run a business there, those are the types of use of that this facility would be able to have in it, unless they come back to us to ask permission to do something else. So with that, I think, go ahead.
I think it's the building.
Cal, let me speak to that one.
Anybody wants one?
So as our staff recommendation to the plan commission, which they did accept and agree with, um, we said that we would approve a recreational and open space zoning district as long as the petitioner would follow the following condition, which is that the architecture of the structure must be the intent of the plan business design guidelines as reviewed by planning department staff at the time of the proposal. So this project won't necessarily have to go back to the plan commission for review, like a site development review, if we do. Kayla and I will review it when it comes in and make sure it's following all those guidelines. Uh, cause we do want it to look, um, you know, within, look similar to what the parks department is doing. We want it to look similar to what required the Hubble's site to look like um, in the, for plan commission, like I said, so. We are looking for the same type of recommendation tonight uh, from the town council. And just to refresh everyone, on a rezone, it is a change in our zoning ordinance, um, and it requires two readings, which technically the plan commission, here's the first reading of it and approves it, and then it comes to you guys first time. So if you guys approve this tonight, Cal will be able to go on his way and start the next step of his process.
Pushed back to the second reading for this.
Right, that, you're the first to consider the ordinance itself. You get a rec, you have a favorable recommendation for the plan commission, and so tonight, that is actually where the public are carrying its hell. But they don't have the authority to pass an ordinance, only this body does. So you get another shot at passing a zoning ordinance, it's a, it's a big deal, and that's why there's two steps.
Any questions or comments? You got any comments or?
No.
Can I go to the bus here?
Did you take a minute and tell us what you're gonna do there, cause I'm not familiar with it?
Yeah, sure. So the, the plan is an eighty by one twenty building. It's very similar in size to athletic.
Athletic club.
Athletic club. So what we're planning to do in there is basically a big open space with turf and nets and we're gonna offer um, teams and individuals, lessons, cage rental, speed agility training. It's gonna be really geared towards baseball and soccer. So the goal is to partner with, help the D and baseball be a resource for them, the football league, champions league, and then parks department, and just wanna be a resource for.
Do you have one of these facilities somewhere else?
I've operated something similar to this, that was not in the town, it was in the county.
So I put my grandson up on range line of that facility.
It is, it is similar to that, but that one's called Throwback.
Right.
Um, not that. It's similar, but that's not mine.
All right.
It's similar in nature.
Yeah, oh, it's good, we need that.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions for? Comments, comments?
We have the actual, we have the actual.
It was emailed later, I think. Yeah.
One thirty, I think. Came from Jill Scott, my assistant.
What the?
And while, yeah, I was, while Jessica's looking for that, I apologize for the late page.
I got it.
We'll happen to you sooner than.
See your deal, sister. That's what you said.
Yes.
Okay, I'll clarify that.
I guess it's a matter of.
I have a motion for ordinance twenty dash fifteen regarding the zoning change.
I'll make a motion approved, ordinance twenty dash fourteen.
I have a motion of second, roll call.
Just for clarification, I think Shane said twenty thirteen, it's.
No, twenty dash fifty, fifty two, sorry.
Robert Jones, please. Jessica Smith. Steve Danny.
Yes.
Shane Davis.
Yes.
Jeff Ab.
Yes.
Good luck, young man.
Yeah, thank you. Hey, uh, ordinance twenty dash sixteen, orders to find the duties of finding director.
I guess.
Put that picture up, I know.
Mr. President, you did, you want me to comment on? Okay, so the intent of this is to um, clear the air, I think right now that, well, I know, the town manager has also called the, also planning director, town planner, and that causes confusion, I think, to make um, Rachel, who is one of the best planners in the state, um, when she sits down with somebody, it needs to be clear that she is the planning director and performing those functions. So this clears the air of that, and I think it's a good move. And it helps the town take more advantage of their skills.
Questions or comments from the council?
Well, I'll comment on everything else, I'm gonna go comment on this. Rachel did a great job as acting town manager, and while still carrying on her job to plan, it's a very good decision. That's it.
I agree, I would agree to that too. Good, good. Can I have a motion and a second? And ordinance twenty dash sixteen, defining the duties of finding director. Roll call. I have a motion, a second, roll call.
Steve Danny.
Yes.
Jessica Smith.
Yeah.
Robert Jones.
Yeah.
Shane Davis.
Yes.
Jeff Ab.
Yes.
Chad, well, if you'd like to do that, two readings tonight.
Yeah. Can I have a motion to?
To suspend the rules for unanimous consent.
Oh, I can't.
Suspend the rules for unanimous consent to pass it the first night of the year.
I have a motion of second.
I have a motion to prefer some rules.
I'm trying to. Motion of second, suspend the rules. You have a second reading on ordinance twenty dash sixteen. Roll call.
Steve Danny.
Yes.
Jessica Smith.
Yes.
Robert Jones.
Yeah.
Shane Davis.
Yes.
Jeff Ab.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well. Then the second reading. Through the second reading on ordinance twenty dash sixteen, planning director.
Thank you much, can you drop uh, ordinance twenty dash?
I'll second that. I have a motion of second. All, I have to do that.
Oh, God, here we go, Shane Davis.
Yes.
Robert Jones.
Yeah.
Jessica Smith.
Yeah.
Steve Danny.
Yes.
Jeff Ab.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
You guys, that really means a lot to me, I really appreciate it.
We talked a lot about this, and sorry it took us long to get it done.
He's old.
Thank you.
And uh, public comments?
Actually, can I speak in and need to talk real quick about the Impact Fees Advisory Committee? Um, if you go back to that presentation I had with the Impact Fees, um, he, Scott and Aaron and I all met a couple weeks ago just to talk about, I had emailed the council, just to come back up a minute, I emailed all of you asking for input on potential steering uh, potential advisory committee members for the Impact Fees Study. Um, and I appreciate everyone responding back to me and giving me your suggestions. Uh, we took all the suggestions and we sat down with Aaron and uh, we did have a kickoff meeting with Baker Tilly and Fanning last week or before. Um, you know, we talked about having two different advisory committees, one that represented the park, one that represented the town, and we decided ultimately that it was probably in our best interest to be one steering committee meeting, or one advisory committee rather than two. And we wanted to make sure we had representation from the town as well as the park on this one. And what we came up with at the end of the day, uh, we wanted to make sure the town council was represented, so we were hoping you guys would allow Jessica Smith to continue on as she's been kind of leading the charge on this. Um, the park board member that we thought would be a good fit to represent was Josh Ring from the plan commission. The plan commission was very instrumental in getting the Impact Fees Study going. They wrote letters of support to the town council, and Jenny Sisson was one that really took, stepped up and took the lead on that as well, so we thought she would be a great member for the advisory committee. Uh, we also need forty percent of the committee to be representing the development industry, so we thought Julie Schneck as a realtor would be a good fit, Tim Pritchard, who does, is kind of like a contractor, um, and also Joe Kilmer, who is in real estate, somewhat of a developer, we thought he would all be good members for this group. Uh, what we're looking for tonight is just your blessing that this is the group that we work with. Of course, if you guys see something that you're not happy with, or if there's someone else you think needs to be included, please let us know. If not, um, we'll move forward with the group.
And as, as all these people that know about this.
Um, I think the only one on the list is probably Josh Ring, because I think we had talked about an alternative member that was not interested, and Josh said that he was with. The others, we have not reached out to him yet.
We have not. So all we're doing tonight is saying it's okay for this.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, if there is someone uh, on this list that ends up not being able to participate, we'll let the council know and we'll pick an alternate number, and let you know who we think should be able, make sure the group is aware.
That's first of all. That's good. Thanks for both of you, thanks for getting this going. I worked there for a while, but who, who is gonna be, who is gonna contact?
I will do it, unless Jessica, you want to.
Good. I do appreciate you moving ahead real quick.
And with that, I will say, it's probably more Rachel than myself, so I'll be further ahead.
Don't worry, she said.
I know, I'm excited, so we're good.
Thank you both. What do we, do we have to vote on this or?
Yes.
Okay. It's not a motion of a second.
Motion, yeah, just a motion of the second to adopt the uh, committee members as.
I need a motion of second to adopt the potential advisory committee.
I'll make a motion approved. Second.
I have a motion of second, roll call.
Jessica Smith.
Yeah.
Robert Jones.
Yeah.
Shane Davis.
Yes.
Steve Danny.
Yes.
Jeff Ab.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay, that's a good step, moving forward. Okay, public comments or input? Anything?
Nope.
Anybody know that's got, sure, if you'll come up to the.
I know your place. I don't know, but my parents and I think so, but I've been on there a year ago.
I need to just interrupt you real quick, can you state your name and your address?
I uh, live in uh, in a couple of place apartments, my name's, so. When we had that tornado, I don't remember how long ago it was, so. I was at the daughter of a general, and uh, I'd say that was in seventy yards from where we were. I was understood, there was two of them, actually, F twos, and uh, um, we were leaving, uh, some lady, baiting was living out the door, and I just walked out the door, that uh, I mean, you build atmosphere, something was wrong. And uh, um, everybody, I told her, just run back in the store, everybody got in the store, and jumped over the creek, went towards Huntsville Road, and I never once heard a siren or anything go off to warn about the uh, you know, any severe weather coming in. I never heard, nobody I spoke to ever heard anything about sirens going off, and I was asking some people in town, one of them was from the Hilton uh, high school, he told me, he was wanting to, the siren going off, he was concerned he was gonna say, I was just curious, I said, that we able, or is it still the same? Cause we were kind of lucky on that one, anyway.
It was on the top of the fire department. I know, this come up before the tornado, I think, out. Come up out. Took one out west of town, and the council, not this whole council, but the council talked about the radios, weather alert radios that are available to everyone, like the water person. But enough, in good moments, I made that, well, it means it. But the, I'm not saying, I totally agree with all this, I'm just telling you what I said, that the cost of the maintenance of a siren, that's very, if you live in today's, it's very costly. I think it's, I'd say we're not gonna do it, just passing on, but with technology regarding cell phones and so forth. I know that night, I personally heard the siren out by the train that was on. And I am the same. Yeah.
I didn't want to lose, I didn't know it could.
And it come across my phone, and it was almost over with by the time I read it, it's up quick. I'm saying, anything bad or fresh agreement with it, well. anything bad or disagree with it, but what I'm trying to say is with technology today, I'm not sure sirens will be able to save. That's my opinion.
It hits so fast, I'm not sure. I don't know that they got killed in it, or if anybody was seriously murdered or anything like that. I can't touch it. One day, it's that same time. One that came from north, one right with my apartment block.
Would you say you lived there?
I live in a thousand place apartments up there. For state. And I was just curious about that because I was from the news, they said they were F2s and you know, seven, eight, four, or five, so I'm telling, what, I mean, this is. Nobody heard any sirens that I know of. That's what I was asking.
I, I did, I live on the. Right now, right now, Anderson has been going off. Severe thunderstorm warning. Those sirens go off, and well, it's the same sirens for that, as of coming. But I mean, yeah, we can hear it out there. There's a siren, I was sitting.
I'm not sure what you're talking about, it's not what.
Roundly, I said. Oh, okay. Where you go back to the falls for free, up in the hallway, there's, there's one out there. It's all been there for a couple of years. That's the closest one.
That's all I'm curious about.
I wish I could give you an answer.
I understand.
Well, thank you. Any other comments, Rachel?
Bye, guys.
That's what I wanted to hear. I need to do a roll call.
No, sir.